All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager for Settlement Housing Fund, which is one of the partner organizations with Harlem River Preservation. It's great to have you all here with us. We always appreciate folks coming out and taking time to join us, ask us their questions, and hopefully benefit from some answers from the development team as well as from NICA. Before I really get started, I'd like for the folks on the interpreter lines to introduce themselves. The Spanish interpreter line, do you want to get started first?
Buenas tardes. Se puede acceder a la interpretación en español por teléfono, por llamar, por mar... para accederlo, marque el número siguiente: 646 558 8656, seguido por la clave: 331 425 8640, signo numeral. Repito, para acceder a la interpretación en español por teléfono, marque 646 558 8656, y luego la clave: 331 425 8640, signo numeral. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the Mandarin line?
ID会约号码是4618579342，谢谢。Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. So just a quick note on format before we really get into it. We mailed out paper copies of this presentation to all of the households. If you're listening to the audio of this meeting over the phone, you can follow along using those copies. We also dropped off paper copies in the property management office for folks to pick up after the meeting. If you can't find the one that we dropped off, that's also available. As always, we are recording this meeting and we will publish the video on our website, which is www.harlemriver.org. That's www.harlemriver.org. And we try to have the meeting up on our website, the recording by the end of the week after we do it. So it should be up by next Friday. Everyone is muted by default during the presentation. And then we have a question and answer session at the end. There are a few different ways to ask a question. First of all, you can type your question in Zoom at any time. We will either type a response to you or we will answer the question out loud during the meeting. There's one small difference with the way we're doing this meeting now as opposed to how we've done it in the past, where we're using what is a question and answer feature. So to ask a question, you can click on the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen as opposed to what used to be a chat button, and you can type in your question. It should be, if you're using a smartphone, you should be able to just tap once on your screen and you should see the letters Q and A at the bottom. And you should be able to type your question. If you'd like to answer, to ask your question out loud at the end of the meeting during the official question and answer period, you can just click Raise Your Hand, which again should be at the bottom of your screen, whether you're on a computer, a tablet, or a smartphone. We will call on you during the Q and A at the end of the meeting and you'll be able to ask your question out loud and we'll respond live. If you're using a phone, you can also ask a que... You can also, excuse me, raise your hand, just dial *9. Your hand will raise, we'll see it on our end, and we will be sure to call on you during the Q and A session. So just a quick note on meeting agenda. We're first going to hear a message from NICA. We have several folks from NICA who've joined the meeting today. We're then going to do a quick recap of last month's meeting. We'll go through quickly, just high level, what questions we're going to answer today. We're going to talk about lease signings, which as I'm sure many of you know are ongoing. We'll go through some information about repairs and inspections that are happening now as well as those that will happen in the future. We'll give you guys an update on what the design of the building actually looks like, the work that we're planning to do in the bathrooms, in the hallways, a variety of different things. We'll present those to you. And then finally, we'll talk through what to expect over the next few months as we continue through this process. And then, of course, we'll finish with our Q and A as usual. So now I'm going to hand it off to NICA. I'm not sure, Ian, do you want to... Are you speaking first?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to speak first. Thanks, Sam. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ian Lundey. I'm a director with the real estate team here at the New York City Housing Authority. I also want to make sure that my colleague Deondra is on the line. Deondra?
Yes, I'm on the line. Thank you so much, Ian.
Okay, fantastic. Do you want to introduce yourself as well, Deondra?
Sure, absolutely. My name is Deondra Van Houston. I am the deputy director for community development, NICA.
Perfect. And Deondra and I just wanted to take a little time at the start of this meeting to make sure that we gave everyone some background on how we got to this point before we dive into the content that Sam just walked through. So first and foremost, we want to thank all of you for making the time to be with us this evening. It is so, so critical for us to have the right inputs in order to perform the repairs needed at Harlem River Houses. And we really can't get that without talking to you and speaking with residents, hearing your questions, hearing your concerns, and hearing your ideas. So thank you so, so much for being with us tonight. And we look forward to being able to answer any and all questions that you have. One thing I noted is that, you know, not all residents are able to join every meeting. So we do want to step back and talk a little bit about how we got to this point and a little bit more about what PACT is before we talk about the specifics at Harlem River. So as you all know intimately, NICA is in need of serious investments. Across our portfolio, NICA needs over $40 billion to bring all of our buildings into a state of good repair. And this means buildings with functioning systems, repaired roofs, updated and working security systems, consistent heat, hot and hot water, no leaks throughout the piping in the building, elevators that are working, upgraded appliances, energy-efficient lighting. In short, buildings that really are to a state of repair that residents deserve. At Harlem River specifically, this is something that we want to be able to deliver for residents, but we don't currently have a sufficient level of funding. And because of that, NICA, who has not historically been able to access the necessary level of operating or capital funding repairs through Section 9, has made the decision that we would like to use a tool to convert to Section 8 with the federal government's program. So the federal government created a program that can deliver critical improvements for public housing residents with dedicated long-term funding, which is our PACT program. PACT stands for Permanent Affordability Commitment Together. And PACT is how NICA is implementing the federal program that's known as RAB, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. RAB was created under the Obama-Biden administration, and it allows housing authorities to switch over funding, as I noted, from Section 9 to Section 8, which is also a public program. And the conversion to Section 8 allows us to bring in new funding sources and to invest in your development with new partners who will help us to more effectively deliver these repairs and to focus really specifically in on the needs of your development of Harlem River Houses for the long-term management and operations. So to get to a point where we're ready to do a conversion, NICA first holds a competitive selection process to designate who we think the most qualified team is with the expertise necessary to deliver repairs and long-term management for your property. So in this case, that's the team that's on with us today, Harlem River Preservation, a nonprofit-led team that we really think has incredible expertise and experience to help bring repairs and better long-term management to the residents of Harlem River Houses. The partners that selected will include a developer, a general contractor who will lead the actual rehabilitation, and then a property manager who will also work with a social service provider who's been designated specifically for this site. And we want to emphasize that although we're working with a new partner, NICA will still own the land and the buildings. So NICA will also continue to act as the Section 8 administrator for all tenants. And NICA will have oversight over this team through every phase of this process. So from pre-development, construction, and long-term management, NICA has full oversight in this team. And if at any point they are not in compliance with their lease that they have with us or with the agreements in general, NICA has the right to step in and replace them. That being said, we do want to emphasize that we really believe and have full confidence in this team and at no point are anticipating a need to do that. So with that, I want to hand it over to Deondra to talk about one of the more exciting components of PACT, which is that with PACT, we're able to really enhance the services available to residents.
Thank you for that handoff, Ian. Again, thank you so much for attending this meeting and allowing space for us to present this material to you. As mentioned before, the PACT program allows NICA to bring on and fund additional services and service coordination at your site. Thanks to the PACT program, we will be able to enhance your onsite services and better connect residents with services they need that are not offered directly on the site. So if you have feedback around what services you would like to see, make sure you communicate them to NICA or the PACT team, many of them on this video call this evening, either through a formal survey or through an informal feedback process. So crucial reason why we look to PACT for repairs is that Congress made sure to guarantee that residents' rights through federal legislation apply to all Section 8 conversions. The PACT process maintains robust rights for residents. Residents continue to retain the rights that they currently have, including residents will not pay more than 30% of their household income towards their rent. You will continue to have the right to organize and NICA will continue to recognize your resident association. There will still be a resident association funding. And in fact, we will be able to dictate more funds towards our social service programs. You will continue, will have the right to renew your lease. Your application will not be screened as a part of this conversion process. So there is no background check, there is no application process that is involved. Your information is just transferable from NICA to the new management team. Residents will also not have to be re-screened as a part of this process. I'm sorry, I just repeated that. I apologize. You will continue to have succession rights. You will have the right to have grievance hearings and recipients of the earned income disregard will continue to receive it exactly as they do under the Section 9 program, which is public housing. The program represents a massive investment in public housing which will require substantial labor force. So NICA will work with our PACT partners to ensure that residents onsite are trained and prioritized for jobs created through this process. The last thing I want to note here is that while we deal with the COVID-19 pandemic, we know that residents' safety and security is a critical component as a part of this process. NICA has put strict COVID safety standards in place that our development team has to abide by. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we work through this together. To wrap it up, we're really, really excited for the path ahead. And we are confident that this team has the experience and the commitment needed to manage this process. And we look forward to hearing your feedback and ideas tonight and, of course, in the future. Ian?
Thanks so much, Deondra. Yeah, I will echo that, that we look forward to hearing from you. Both Deondra, myself, and additional members of the NICA team will be on tonight, as always, to answer any questions that you have for us with the development team. Thank you again to everyone for being with us tonight. And with that, I will hand it back over to Harlem River Preservation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ian and Deondra. Before we move to the next slide, I just want to remind folks how to use the Q and A feature if you'd like. If you're using a smartphone or a tablet, if you just tap on the phone or the tablet screen, a little bar should appear either at the bottom or the top. There is a button that says Q and A with little question bubbles. If you click on it, you should see a button that says Ask a Question. You should be able to ask it, and we can either answer it in text to you or we will answer it live at the end of the Q and A. With that, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Saieda of West Harlem Group Assistance to do a quick recap of what we covered last meeting. Saieda?
Good evening, everyone. And so as Sam said, our last meeting was on April 29th, and we went over the leasing process. Right? So as a part of the PACT conversion at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2, each household must sign a new PACT Section 8 lease. The PACT lease was developed by NICA and informed by residents, advocates, and stakeholders. This lease cannot be changed without NICA's approval. Harlem River residents will transition from Section 9, public housing, to Section 8, project-based voucher. Current Harlem River residents automatically qualify for Section 8 through PACT. Under the PACT program, your lease automatically renews each year. You will be able to request a portable Section 8 voucher from NICA one year after the conversion. If you currently pay 30% of your income in rent, your rent will stay the same. If you pay a flat rent or less than 30%, your rent increase will be phased in over a five-year period until it reaches 30% of your adjusted gross household income. Utilities are included in your rent. After the conversion, you will still need to recertify your household income and family composition with NICA. NICA will notify you each time you need to recertify your income and household composition as a Section 8 tenant. PACT lease signings began in May and will continue through the summer. You will receive a written notice at your apartment with the date and time of your lease signing appointment. Okay. And so some questions we'll answer today. How you can prepare for your lease signing? What work is currently happening? What will interior spaces look like after construction? When will construction begin? And what should residents expect over the next few months? So how to prepare for your lease signing? You should review the lease we delivered to your unit. Extra copies are available at the Harlem River Property Management Office or on our website at www.harlemriver.org. Ask questions. Call the Legal Aid Society for support. Legal Aid is free, is a free independent resource available to help residents review the PACT Section 8 lease and answer questions. The telephone number is 212-298-3450. Leave them, you can leave a message for our team, Harlem River Preservation team, and we will call you back. 212-862-1399, extension 2719. Or you can send our team an email at info@harlemriver.org. And finally, to prepare for your lease signing, you should gather your documentation, your documents and information needed for your lease signing. So that would be a government-issued photo ID for the head of household or co-lessee. Examples would be a driver's license, a non-driver license, permit, or your passport. You can request, reasonable accommodation requests are accepted, and you would bring supporting documents if applicable. In special circumstances concerning your unit or unit, our construction team should be aware of. So this is an opportunity to let us know more about the conditions of your apartment or the building that you live in in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Saieda. So really quickly, I want to go through what is currently happening at the site. Some of you have may have seen our staff walking around. We typically wear identification everywhere we go. We have neon vests that we wear as well as lanyards with identification on it. There are limited repairs happening at Harlem River right now. These are in preparation for housing quality standards inspections. These are required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they will also continue during the construction period. What I mean by that is while some units are getting the full renovation, other units that have not started the full renovation will receive repairs while work is ongoing. Ultimately, all the units will be renovated. But I just want to be clear that there will continue to be repairs as we move through the construction schedule. When it is time for any of your repair appointments or the rehabilitation of your unit itself, you will receive a notice with a written notice at your door with the date and time of the repair appointment. And of course, if the time does not work for you, if you're unable to be in the unit to provide access or if there are any concerns, our phone number and our email address will be on that notice. And please feel free to contact us if we need to schedule a different time that works better for your schedule. We are also continuing, in addition to repairs, to conduct inspections to finalize the scope of construction work. It is a big development, and there is a lot to look at from building systems to leaks in apartments, to missing features, to a whole host of things that we'll be working on once construction begins. And we are still continuing inspections through the summer to make sure that we're aware of all the issues that we need to address during the building process. So now we want to turn to some exciting stuff. Well, hopefully, most of this has been exciting, but some really exciting stuff, which is a design update. I'm going to quickly just go through these bullets and then we'll show you some images and some renderings to go along with this that will give you a sense of what things might look like as close as possible once we're actually done with construction. And my colleague Ellie Himmelstein, who is with our general contractor, will walk you through some of the improvements that you can expect to see once we finish. First of all, one change is we will be updating all of the heating and cooling systems at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2 such that they are modernized and they run on electricity. Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2 will also receive modernized equipment to produce your hot water. The equipment is more efficient, more reliable, and also more environmentally friendly than the existing system. The designs, the sample designs for the lobby, the facade and the hallways at the tower Harlem River 2 are now complete, and we will show you what those will look like. And also, the design for the bathrooms at Harlem River Houses as well as the tower have also been finalized. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Ellie Himmelstein to go through some of these renderings. Ellie?
Hey, thanks, Sam. Hi, everybody. Nice to, nice to be able to join in on another resident meeting. So let's get right into it. So the existing design, everyone's familiar with Harlem River 2, right? With the tower, maybe the most striking thing is that when you approach the building, it's like you're basically going into the subway, right? There's been a sidewalk shut up there for quite some time, years. And that's primarily because the building is right now considered unsafe. That's the actual category that the city gives it under Local Law 11. And that's because there's been spalled brick, brick falling off of the bulkhead around the water tower. There've been areas of leaks, which obviously residents know firsthand about. And basically, overall, the facade needs work. And then there's just the general appearance. It's your standard 15-story brick building. And, you know, as it's noted on the slide, a little bit of an outdated design. So the plan, if we can go to the next slide, is to, first, we're going to address all the masonry work and get the building deemed as safe, which, once we're completed with our work, after we're done with the overclading, the sidewalk shed will be gone. And you'll walk out of your building in the morning and you'll be able to see whether it's raining, whether it's sunny. You won't feel like you're underground. And after we're done with our masonry repairs, we have a very exciting design that the architects and the design team, the consultants, came up with. Basically, over the existing masonry, we're going to have an exterior insulated finishing system, where basically insulation gets adhered to the building and then a stucco finish is put on top of it. So you get a sense that all of a sudden, you have a brand-new, a brand-new-looking building. Also, another exciting feature is that on the ground floor, as opposed to the existing narrow entrance, which has limited light coming in, the plan is to open up a lot of that masonry, put in glass storefront. It's going to be more inviting, and it will let more light in. And as it's noted on the slide, new lobby, entryway, and landscaping. So there's going to be a total new entry to the building and a whole new look to the facade. In addition to the look, probably equally important, it's going to make the building more energy efficient. It's going to make it more comfortable by wrapping it in that insulation. And between that and the heating and cooling upgrades, it's going to be a dramatic change to the building. So just to repeat that last point, some residents may have window ACs. Those are no longer going to be required. The building will be providing, in addition to heat that the resident can regulate, you'll also have cooling coming out of that same console. There'll be one located in every room, and you can heat or cool your unit as you see fit. We can go to the next slide, please. All right. So this is the existing lobby. Again, everyone is familiar with it. You see how, when you walk in, it is a nice feature. You have sunglass, the old glass block, but you can't see out of it. So it does let in light, but there's no transparency. And in general, it's a narrow, it's a narrow entrance. And also, perhaps the most striking thing is that, as I see every single time I go to check out conditions, whether it was on the roof or today, I visited a tenant in the tower to learn a little bit more about some of the plumbing leaks. The building is wide open. The doors are not secure. So we can go to the next slide, please. We'll be introducing a new lobby. And I'll try and walk you through this as clearly as possible. But just to start off, the doors will be secured. All the tenants will be getting key fobs. The maintenance company, if, I'm sorry, the management company, rather, will maintain the building so that if, for some reason, a lock is broken or whatever it might be, it will get repaired immediately. So there'll be new intercoms and key fob-controlled access. So the building will be secure. Residents can come and go as they please, and then they can let their guests in as they please. But the building will be secure. So if you look on the right-hand side of the slide, the, all the way in the background, those are the doors as you come in. And what you see to the left of that now is instead of the existing brick, you have all-new storefronts. So look at that light that's coming in. So you can see out of the building, people can see into the building. We have a brand-new mailroom going in, which is going to allow for package deliveries. There can be parcel boxes. So if you're getting something from whatever, around the holidays, a package in the mail, you'll be able to receive it from the postal service. You won't have to go to the post office to pick up a package. And it's basically a complete redesign where the entrance to the building is completely opened up. And then you see the new finishes from the tile floor to the wall features, the new LED lighting, so the lobby, in addition to all that light coming in from outside, is now going to be well-lit efficiently from the new fixtures. So we can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so a switch to the interior of your apartments. And this applies to both Harlem River 1 and 2. So you can see a lot of the, in addition to the fixtures being dated, there have been a lot of repairs done over the years. So all the bathrooms, with a few exceptions, are in various states of either disrepair or just have dated finishes that, you know, can obviously use a refresh. So old light fixtures where you're not getting the bright, efficient lighting from an LED fixture. You have an acoustic ceiling tile there at the ceiling of the bathroom. There have been a lot of leaks over the years. Those are deteriorated, falling out. You have mismatched grab bars. There's no, there are some apartments have a vanity to store materials, you know, to store your toiletries, and some have wall-mounted sinks. So it's and some have wall-mounted sinks. So it's, uh, it's a little bit all over the place. And I guess most impactful is there, there have been a lot of, a lot of leaks. So, and that's obviously impacted the, the overall finishes. So if we can, um, jump to the, to the next slide, please. So this is a rendering of what the bathrooms will look like, uh, once we complete our scope. So, uh, you see there's a new LED light fixture. The bathrooms are instantly brighter because they're receiving the lighter paint. We will address, uh, probably most importantly, any existing leaks from the top down. So, you know, you work on the facade. You, um, we have masonry repairs going on at Harlem River One and Two. We're replacing all the roofs at the property, so you have a tight, you have a tight building envelope. And then you can address all the, all the plumbing leaks. So old rotted out, uh, sanitary risers, vent lines, plumbing lines, whatever, whatever might be the case. Our, our plumber goes in, opens the walls as needed, replaces pipes. We replace, we replace the entire tubs. We expose the tub trap and tub waste. We can see and make sure that those lines are going to be plumbed properly. Uh, I mean, many residents have, have gone over to myself, to Anthony, to Cody, and told us about how, you know, they just might have spent money to repaint their, their bathroom. And two days later, it, I, I actually just saw this today, a day later, their paint starts to flake off because no fault to the apartment above them, but there might be a leak from the toilet or the sink, and that's instantly, it's not just the leak in that, in that unit, it impacts everyone, uh, everyone around them. So, uh, just quickly to, to go through the finishes, you have a new medicine cabinet, new light fixture, uh, new paint, obviously repairing to the walls wherever there's damaged sheet rock. Uh, a new sheet rock ceiling, moisture-resistant sheet rock to replace that acoustical tile, which is in various states of disrepair and falls down. New vanity on stainless steel legs, so that if there's ever water on your floor, you don't have to worry about the vanity rotting out. New low-flow toilet fixture, which is a comfort height, which a lot of the, the seniors have, have talked to us about. Beautiful porcelain tile floors, new tubs, uh, not, not a tub liner, but, you know, ripping out, removing the existing tub and replacing it entirely. A beautiful new tub surround to replace the, the ones that are kind of, uh, you know, faded and have been, been, uh, just in general disuse. And obviously, new grab bars, new showerheads, new diverters. Basically, a, uh, a, a brand new, a brand new bathroom. I think, is that, is there a slide after this? Or, right, we have the, right, the hallways. So, um, this is at, at Harlem River, at Harlem River Two, and then there'll be some overlap to, to Harlem River One. So this property is, is unusual in the sense that you have wider hallways than a lot of NYCHA, NYCHA Tower properties that, that I've at least seen. And our, our architect has made the, the same comment. So there's a lot of potential here, but when you go into the hallways, whether there, whether there's garbage, uh, you know, garbage bags against the wall, because they don't, the, residents can't fit the garbage down that small chute door, which is, you know, almost the size of a, of, um, you know, it's, it's like a mail slot more than a, more than a trash chute, right? They're very, very small doors. Uh, and then in general, they're, they're not as well-lit as I imagine residents would like to see. The floors are, are a little dated. The paint is, is older. So if you can go to the, the next slide. The design team has come up with a really exciting, fresh design. So it's, it's a little, it's a little small, but just to, to go back to what we were touching upon in the last slide. And this will be at Harlem River One as well. We're going to take out the existing, the existing trash doors and replace them. There, there's a large trash chute behind that tiny door. So we're going to put in new stainless steel doors, which is going to create a larger opening, allow residents to be able to throw away regular-sized garbage. You don't have to worry about taking it down in the elevator with you or leaving it, uh, at the side for, for a porter, it'll be able to go down the chute. And equally important, from a maintenance standpoint, the doors will be able to be locked, which means that the management company will be able to safely wash down the chutes on a regular basis, which takes care of rodents and pests and, and some of the odors that are, that are known to come out of trash chutes. So that's, that's a very, um, not to, not to talk too much about garbage. It's a really nice quality-of-life piece of the scope that we're doing. And then, you know, the rest, I think, speaks for itself. You have new LED lighting, which brightens up the hallways. You have, uh, paints, coatings going on the existing tile, again, to brighten up the hallways. New, uh, new flooring, a new wall base, just a total refresh of the, uh, of the existing, uh, hallways. And I believe that's about it. We're, we're excited to, uh, to get started when that, when that happens and look forward to, uh, meeting more, more residents on site and getting going. Thanks for the, for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Ellie. Um, really great to hear. I, I just want to let residents know that we have, in previous meetings, if you haven't, uh, if you weren't able to attend, shown images of what the stair halls in Harlem River Houses will look like. It is somewhat different to this. It's that, that does not mean it is not getting a lot of work done, but the design is slightly different. We've also shown, um, images of what the kitchens will look like. We're, we're doing brand-new kitchens. So if you, if you're interested in that, please feel free to go back to our website, harlemriver.org, and check out the recordings of our meetings. You'll be able to see all of those presentations. We also have, as I've mentioned previously, copies of all of these slides from all the meetings that we've done at the property management office. If you want to hold a paper, paper copy and look at the, look at the, the picture. So I want to talk a bit about what residents should expect in the next few months. So first of all, NYCHA is, remains the property manager of the development. The prop, the construction work has not yet officially begun. So until that point, which we are projecting to begin this fall, fall 2021, please do contact NYCHA for all of your maintenance issues. They are, they remain your property manager. Um, and until that construction period starts, they will continue to take care of maintenance issues. We are continuing inspections and limited repairs in some apartments. As I said previously, we always post and deliver notices, both to your door, showing the exact date and time of your particular appointment, as well as frequently will show the overall schedule for repairs across the development, not just your apartment, so you can have a general idea of what's going on in the community. And as I said again, if the repair appointment that we've made for you is not going to work for whatever reason, please just feel, feel free to give us a call, um, so we can reschedule it at a time that's more convenient. Lease signings. So Said, I mentioned previously, but lease signing appointments are ongoing. I know many of you, um, have probably already had your appointment. And these will continue into the summer. Our last town hall meeting, again, we did go through the entire lease, uh, point by point, to make sure folks understood what's actually in there. But if you either missed that or you have any questions, there's a lot of resources available to you. You can call the Legal Aid Society, which is a free, independent legal service. The number is right there on the screen, 212-298-3450. That's 212-298-3450. They can help you review your new lease. You can also call the PACT hotline, which I am actually seeing, we did not put on this slide, but I believe it is on a next slide. Ian, do you mind? If, if, I don't know if you can jump in, um, if you know the, the number off, off the top of your head, but if not, we'll be sure to send out, um, in our next flyer. Make sure that you have that information. It's again, a, a NYCHA resource. You can give NYCHA a call and ask them questions about the PACT program, about your lease. Walk through the lease, ask, have questions answered. Uh, and then, of course, during your lease signing appointment itself, you can ask us questions. We'll have someone there with you, walking, walking you through the process. And of course, you'll get, get a notice at your front door with your lease signing appointment, the date and the time. And, um, and, and we'll be able to answer questions during that appointment. You may see and hear us working in apartments in the common areas, as well as in mechanical areas. This is in line with the work that we've described is ongoing. That will continue. These are, um, repairs that are needed to keep the building, uh, running and safe until we get to the construction period. The repairs, of course, will continue because not all the construction will happen immediately. But, um, we just want to make you aware that our staff will continue to be on site with our, typically our neon yellow vests and our identification cards. Resident town halls like this one occur every four to six weeks. We'll continue doing them. Um, we always look forward to providing this information and, of course, posting it on our website once, once we're finished. Uh, and then finally, in terms of timing, we'll talk about this a little bit more in a second. We expect to begin the construction work sometime in the fall. It's a little bit of a, the exact date moves a little bit based on how much progress we make with lease signings, with inspections. But as we, um, update the date, both forward and backwards, um, we try to let you all know as soon as possible, especially during meetings like this one. Okay, just a continuation slide again with some more timing. So right now, uh, we're, well, we're almost summer now, but we'll say spring 2021 inspections and repairs. We did a resident survey. Deandra from NYCHA mentioned this, I believe, in her introduction at the beginning of this meeting. But we did a, we handed out a paper survey to all apartments, and we also had a, a code you could scan with your phone to complete it online, where we had residents let us know by answering, I think it was about 10 survey questions, the services that they wanted to see in the development. We will have a onsite, uh, social service provider. They will have an office in Harlem River. Once we finish construction and they will be providing services to residents. And this survey was just a way for us to start getting a sense from you what sort of services you'd like to see, what programs you'd like to see. Not to worry if you did not see the survey or you forgot to answer, no problem. We'll continue to get, to ask for your feedback on the types of things you'd like to see. This will certainly not be the, the only time. So, um, these, these, this will be an evolving conversation and we'll continue to engage with you to understand what you want, rather than, um, sort of creating it from scratch and, and not asking. We're doing this resident town hall meeting right now, um, in the summer, which again, is really starting right now. We're continuing inspections and repairs. We're continuing lease signings. Of course, we'll have another town hall like this one. Then in the fall, um, we will be doing a, again, another town hall, and then we will start doing hiring and training. This is another topic we talked about during a town hall meeting. We'll be talking about it again. There will be a number of jobs, as well as training opportunities that are created by this project, that will be available to residents. They're prioritized for, for NYCHA residents, um, and they will be available to you. We will communicate much more about this, uh, once we get a little bit closer to construction, both what the jobs are, how to apply for them, and as well as, um, when the employment starts, um, and really everything you need. And some of these are, will be great opportunities if you are interested right now and you want to get a little bit of a jump on this, um, and you, you think you might be interested in a job that's, that's, you know, potentially in construction. Please feel free to drop us, try, give us your resume. Many of you know our office is at this side of the old library, with the, the red door along, um, Adam Clayton. Um, and please feel free to stop by. We'd love to, to, to get your resume, um, if you're interested in a position. We keep them on file, and once we do start considering applicants for positions, we'll be sure to, to, to reach out to you. And then finally, construction begins. Again, fall 2021, um, we'll be able to be more specific with the exact start date relatively soon, um, and we will, of course, communicate that to the residents. Okay, so we're now on to, uh, the Q and A, um, period. As we do every meeting, um, there are a few ways to ask a question. The first is you can type it into the Q and A. I'm sorry, this, this slide should have been slightly updated as we're no longer doing the chat. It's a, it's an official Q and A feature. So you can type your question into the Q and A. We'll either type a response or we'll answer the question out loud. You can also click Raise Your Hand. I see that we already have two participants that have raised their hand. If you want to raise your hand, I will call on you. Um, I will, will ask you to unmute your microphone, then you can ask your question. And then we'll have the, the person on the call from our staff, who is the expert in the subject, um, answer or from, from NYCHA. I know we have a number of people from NYCHA. So with that, oh, I'm sorry, let me actually say, if you are using a telephone and you'd like to, as in if you're dialing in on a telephone and you'd like to raise your hand, just dial star nine. It will automatically raise your hand. We'll be able to see it on our end, and we can, um, call on you and you can ask a question. So with that, um, why don't we start with one of the raised hands? Would the caller, um, whose phone number ends in 2629, please? Please let us know your question. 2629, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, hi. We can hear you.
Hi. I also called the, um, the PACT hotline with these two questions. I have both carpeting and toweling in my apartment. All right, and I read in the lease where you're not supposed to have that. I've had it for over 20-something years.
Okay, and is your, is your question, um, is your question, are you going to be able to keep the carpeting? I just want to make sure I understand your question. Okay, thank you for the question. Ellie, do you want to answer that, or Judy, I'm not sure if that might be an answer for you?
I know that we're going back with, uh, we're, we're planning on installing a new floor, which a lot of residents were excited about, as to whether, and, and I, from what I understand, then NYCHA does not allow carpet to be one of the options that we install, uh, for multiple reasons. But I, I don't know what the, what the protocol is for someone who already has carpet, whether they're allowed to keep it.
I can jump in. I think, um, in general, sorry, this is Judy. I'm with Settlement Housing Fund and part of the development team too. Um, in general, our goal is to do the upgrades uniformly across the developments so that everyone gets all of the new, um, upgrades that we're doing because we think that they're really great and that people will appreciate them. And it's also means that we'll be able to maintain them. But if there are individual circumstances, we'll address those on a case-by-case basis. And so, you know, as we get closer, we'd love to hear from you and to understand exactly what's going on in your unit.
What I'm telling you.
Right, so we'll just need to have more of a specific conversation about where the carpet is. And I don't actually know, I don't know if, um, there are people from NYCHA who can comment if it's a lease violation and if we're, or if we're allowed to make accommodations for it. But I think it makes sense to have, I think it's a somewhat specific question, so we can talk about your unit specifically um, off of the overall webinar.
So what are you saying? Did I have to call back in, or?
Sure, yeah. Why don't you contact us? We can also handle it when we, uh, make your appointment to, I don't know if you've already had your inspection, but please reach out to us and we can, uh, make an appointment to talk with you about your specific circumstance.
I already reached out to you. You want me to reach out to you again?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
And you said you, you said you had two questions. Do you want to ask your other one while you're on?
Two. I have, I have the, um, the towel in the hallway and the kitchen and the carpeting in my living room and my bedroom.
Got it. So, thank you, yes. So why don't, please do reach out to us. You can either send us an email at info@harlemriver.org, or you can call our, um, our phone line. Said, or Judy, do you mind dropping in the phone number into the chat so everyone can have it when you're able? Thank you. So yes, please do reach out to us and we'll schedule some time, um, to have a conversation with you. Okay, um, it looks like we have a question from the Spanish line. Michelle, do you want to ask that question? Looks like Michelle is getting the question, so we'll just wait for a second. Let's just give it another moment. Okay, actually, you know what it looks like. We'll just get a message from the interpreter when they're ready to ask the question. So let's move on to So let's move on to another one of the raised hands. Would the caller whose, whose number ends in 3149, please unmute?
Okay, okay. Excuse me, when you have a moment, there's a question from the Spanish line.
Sure, let's, let's just let this caller go first as I.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, okay, my first question is, how long is the repairs and the renovation going to take place? Overall period, like how many months?
Great, thank you so much for that question. I'm going to ask Ellie to answer that one. It might be multiple people, but Ellie, do you want to start off with an answer to that one?
Yeah, sure, it's a great question. So overall, you could expect to see us onsite from when we actually start the actual construction roughly for two and a half years. During those two and a half years, there'll be time, there'll be times that were directly, you know, you'll see us every single day, whether it's during when we're doing the work on your bathrooms or kitchens or the flooring or painting the entire unit or replacing your windows. And then there'll be times that you'll see us outside when we're working on the facade or replacing the roofs or working on some of the mechanical equipment. But overall, it's, it's a two and a half year process. There'll be times when we are very much in, in, um, you know, it's very obvious that we're there and it's impactful. And you know, obviously we, we schedule all the work and you'll know, you will know well in advance of us showing up. It won't just be a knock on someone's door. Uh, and then you'll see general work that we do, you know, day to day onsite.
Okay, and my other question is, um, the, um, the speculate debt transferred over to, that is project based. What about if you want to move, you know, in another borough or something, you know?
Right, yeah, that's a, that's another great question. I'm, I'm going to pass it over to Robert Tesorero over at NYCHA to answer that one. Before I do though, I just want to be really clear about the timing of the renovation. We're not saying that your actual unit is going to be under construction for two and a half years. That's the duration of the whole project. So replacing the roof and doing, ever doing everything in the entire project. Ellie, can you speak to before we answer this second question? How roughly how long it actually takes to do the units themselves?
Sure, that would be really, that would be really impressive if it took us two and a half years to put in a, a new bathtub. So, uh, we're, we're constantly fine tuning this so that it's more Harlem River specific. But typically it takes us as many as five days to work in a bathroom. An additional five days to work in a kitchen. And then coming back and doing additional work in, in the apartment. So residents will see us for a day when we paint your entire unit. You'll see us back for another day when we install windows. It'll be another day later, you know, further down, let's say when we replace flooring. So we try and, we try and space out the work so we're not taking over your entire life. We understand obviously people have work and family commitments and children to take care of and themselves to take care of. So we try and be in and out as quickly as possible, but it's, it's a lot of work. And, um, you know, again, we try and move as quickly and safely as, as possible to deliver the best product.
Okay, but no one answered my question about the project base section eight. When will you be able to use that anywhere, to go anywhere with?
So yeah, hi, this is Robert Tesorero, I'm director for NYCHA lease housing section eight program. That's a great question and you're correct, it is project based vouchers. So once we convert from section nine, which is public housing to section eight, one year from that conversion date, you have the option and it's totally up to you to request a voucher, a transfer voucher to transfer within the five boroughs or if you would like, also use the portability option to leave New York City. Since this is a federally funded program, section eight, you can transfer your section eight to any housing authority throughout the country that administers a section eight program. And right now, our regular section eight program, which is about 90,000 tenants, we have approximately 1,500 that took their vouchers and are now living outside of New York City where the housing authority is paying a monthly rent subsidy. So there's a lot of options for you and that's a great question. So thank you for asking that.
And just to be clear, just very simply.
Hello, sir, are you there? Hello?
Yes.
Are you there? Okay, now if there are tenants that are not quite comfortable and sign it a lease due to the conditions of the apartment and for several other reasons, what, what's the next step now? What happens to them? They can't get put out, right? If they're paying their rent and they're in good standing. So what happens? Can you answer that?
Sam, you're muted. Do you want me to take it?
I'm so sorry, it would help if I unmuted myself. Um, Judy, sure, if you want to take that one or Robert or Judy, do you want to go first?
Sure, yeah, no, it's, it's a funny situation since normally, um, you obviously don't sign a lease unless the apartment is in the condition that you expect. But because of the way that the financing works here, um, we'll be taking over and starting the construction and running the management. Obviously NYCHA, as we've said many times, will continue to be very involved. But we'll be doing all of that at the start of construction. And so because we'll be stepping in as the managers, we do need to have all of the leases in place so that you have the, um, relationship with us since we'll be coming in right then. I don't know Marissa or Ian or if someone from NYCHA wants to answer the kind of rest of that question.
Hey Judy, um, can you, can you just clarify the, the second part just so I make sure I'm answering correctly?
I think the question was just, um, what happens if people aren't willing to sign their leases?
Got it. Thanks Judy. So, uh, as, as with your current section nine lease, it's required every year that you sign or originally you have to sign a lease and then we go through certifications with you. Uh, in the same way that you have to sign a section nine lease at the outset of your tenancy there, we also need you to sign a section eight lease. So a lease is an agreement between the housing authority and or the project, the property manager and a tenant. And if we don't have a signed lease with a tenant, then there's no agreement to either be the housing manager or the tenant. So we, we do need any resident of section nine or section eight housing to sign a lease. And you know, as we've presented today, Harlem River will be a section eight property. So we will need any tenant who wants to remain an active tenant to be signing a section eight lease.
Thanks so much, Ian. So I did receive the question from the Spanish line. It, uh, the, the, a listener asked, um, saying that they live at Harlem River Houses, not Harlem River 2. They said that this, the lot, the building that they live at is quite small. These are the four or five story buildings, of course. And referring to the picture that we showed of the, the big lobby. They said they're rightly noticing that there's not enough space for that over at the Harlem River Houses side. So they're, they're asking what kind of lobby will their, their small four story building get? So I can take this one a little bit and then Ellie, if you want to jump in, please feel free. So the, the work that will occur at Harlem River Houses and Harlem River 2 is different. The buildings are quite different as this person definitely understands and sees. The, the size of that lobby is not possible in where the Harlem River Houses campus is located. We are doing a number of, a number of repairs, extensive repairs in the Harlem River Houses stair halls. We're doing, um, a, a bunch of different refreshing, cleaning the floors. We're absolutely cleaning up the, um, the interior tiling, doing new lighting, new railings, new paint. New, all new apartment doors, new door chimes. But as you said, there's no space for a lobby like that. So they won't have that feature. But I don't want it to seem like they won't get any work. There will be extensive work to rehabilitate and add better modernized features at Harlem River Houses. It will just be different than Harlem River 2. We did show, um, I believe it was two town hall meetings ago, um, an image of what that stair hall will look like. If you're interested, please feel free to go to our website and watch that video. You can see an actual picture of what it will look like. And then also for that, um, the front door of all of the buildings or all of the entrances and exits to the buildings at Harlem River Houses will be completely replaced. Getting brand new doors, brand new intercoms, um, across Harlem River Houses. Okay, um, let's move on. I see a question from the number ending in 0955. Would you please unmute and let us know your question?
Good evening, um, I just, I, I understand that we are getting new apartment doors?
Yes.
Is that correct? Now what's going to happen to our personal locks on our doors? Because I, I personally have been robbed by a housing authority contractor and the housing authority employee, two of them. So what's going to happen? Who, you know, just to have a new door, it's not going to protect us. Many of us have our own personal locks on these doors.
Sure, absolutely. Um, Ellie, um, I also, I'm not sure if Mike crushes on here, but Ellie, do you want to talk for a second about the improvements to the doors as well as to security?
Yeah, sure. So, so I.
And let me just say one more thing. I paid a lot of money for this lock. I have a Medco lock. So that's expensive.
It's a great, that's a great product. So, so first of all, um, you're going to have a, an experienced security team, excuse me, reviewing footage that they're going to have from the moment someone walks into the building. From cameras at the exterior, cameras in the lobbies, cameras in the elevator, cameras in the stairwells, cameras in the, in the common area hallways. So if someone walks over to your apartment, uh, I mean, obviously we're hoping no one's apartment is getting broken into. More typically, cameras are used for quality of life issues. If someone leaves their garbage in front of their door, if someone's letting in, uh, you know, a lot of guests after, after, you know, late hours or there's some activity going on. So the, the camera footage is excellent and, uh, security onsite can go back and review that and see who exactly is coming into someone's apartment and share that with the police if need be. As, as for the apartment entry doors, in addition to just being, uh, I, I've seen this firsthand both at Harlem River one and two. Whether it's the doors to get into the, into the buildings themselves not being secure or tenants' doors. It might just be due to age. It might just say, you know, any number of conditions, the doors, many of them aren't secure. So a brand new door immediately by being installed properly, tight to the door frames that you can't tamper with the, with the mortise lock will be more secure. What we do in terms of people who have residents who have their own lock. And, and I should say that the product that's being installed, the mortise lock is a more secure lock than what's at the property right now. It is a, it is a stronger, more secure piece of hardware. We will, we will prep the doors to receive a secondary deadbolt. Uh, in other words, we'll, we'll leave a hole in the door and put a blank over it on the inside and the outside. And then if the tenant wants to install their own additional lock, that's at their, that's at their discretion.
Yeah, but that's not going to help me because I was robbed by employees. Employees, you're talking about strangers. I was robbed by employees. They are human just like anybody else. And that's who I was robbed by. People that had a right to be in here at some point. So that's not going to help me.
Which is, which is awful and, and I'm so sorry, but I, if it, if it's any consolation, I know that the developer and the contractor and the management company hold our staff and our contractors and everyone onsite highly, highly accountable. If there, there is, there is no, you know, three strikes, you're out. There is one strike, you're off the property. And I don't mean something that would involve, you know, an infraction that would, uh, involve the police like a break in. I just mean if, if anything untoward, if there's an interaction with a, with a resident that we're not pleased with or whatever it might be, we, we have a very high standard. Because we need to, right? We're coming into people's homes. Uh, so we, we hold everyone accountable. And if you have a, if you have a lock that you're happy with right now and it makes you feel secure and safe, then I'm sure we can speak with you and see how we can modify the secondary, you know, prepping the door to be able to receive that, that piece of hardware.
Yeah, that would help me.
Okay.
I want to live in here without a lock.
Right.
Thank you so much for the question. Let's move on. Do we have any, um, do we have any questions from either of the translation lines? Okay.
No questions in the Spanish.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No, no questions, no questions, Spanish line.
Great, okay. Um, let's move on. Um, I see a question from Kim Letley. Kim, would you like to unmute your microphone and let us know your question?
Yes, good evening. Um, my question was sort of touched on, it is the security. So if I'm understanding correctly, we will have, just like you're saying, there will be social service office, which is great. But we have, you know, we have that already outside, but that's great. Will we have a office with a, with a, a team that we can call or go in and, and things of that nature on the premises?
Great, thanks so much for that question. Ellie, are you able to speak to that? I'm not sure we have, I know we don't have Doreen on today, but.
We do have Priscilla.
We have Priscilla too. So Priscilla, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that as well as Ellie.
Priscilla, you want to, or you want to take it?
Hi, everyone. This is Priscilla. Many of you may be familiar with me. So I am located in the old library and I will still be onsite along with the team that you are familiar with. Many of you are familiar with Tia and Quana and will still be the team there onsite and continue to be onsite after the conversion and will be more than happy to meet with you and address any of your needs.
And I would also say, Ellie, actually, would you mind just explaining the security scope one more time? The full scope as well as some of the staffing, if you're aware of it?
Yeah, sure. Um, so right now as you walk around the property, you do see a few cameras, but there really aren't enough. And we've gotten so much feedback from whether it was your, your TA board or various residents that, uh, you know, there's activity on, onsite. There's, there's things to be, things to be concerned about, right? So for starters, this, the site has to be adequately lit. So when you're coming home from work or, or whatever might be the case, the, um, all the lights have to be functional, the sites and paths to your, to your residence have to be well lit. Uh, and there will be, in addition to all the site lighting that we'll be adding, we'll have, excuse me, uh, digital cameras with infrared visioning, uh, from the top down, from the roof. Uh, you know, so at the bulkheads. So in addition to motion sensors and alarm doors at the bulkheads, there'll be cameras at the roof to capture any activity. In your, in your hallways as you walk out of your apartment, capturing, uh, someone walking from the elevator to their apartment. Within the elevators themselves and also within the stairwells. So if someone gets out of, uh, gets out of an elevator, jumps into a stairwell, security will be able to see that as, as well. Then there are cameras obviously in the lobby as you walk into the building and multiple cameras capturing, um, the site itself. It's a large footprint. There are going to be a lot of, a lot of improvements to the grounds, the playgrounds, et cetera. And there will be cameras viewing that, that as well. So the, there is a, in a really impressive security staff that the management company has. These are former NYPD officers for the majority and also equally important people who have been involved in housing, you know, dealing with residents for, for years, you know. So understanding, um, you know, all, all the possible things that can come up and helping make the neighborhood and, and the residents a, a safer place to, to be. So there'll be tour commanders. I mean, I don't know if Priscilla wants to, to talk about the, the actual, the actual staffing, but there's a, a lot that's, uh, that's going into that.
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a full security staff. It's actually something that, we get this question a lot and rightfully so. Unfortunately, the person that is best equipped to talk about it actually wasn't able to make this meeting. We can make sure that we have someone for the manage, another, other folks from the management company, CNC on the line at our next town hall so we can answer, um, the question in a really robust way. But suffice it to say, there will be an, there's an extensive physical security scope going in. So cameras, a lot of lighting, obviously Ellie talked about the, the front doors of the all apartments as well as to the buildings. So cameras, a lot of lighting, obviously Ellie talked about the, the front doors of the all apartments as well as to the buildings, in addition to physical people onsite at all times, doing, walking the property in the evenings and helping residents with any security issues. But again, we will make sure that we have additional folks from CNC on the next town hall so we can address this question again and make sure that we're fully answering your question. Okay, it looks like we have three hands still. Before I move to them, any questions from the translation lines?
No additional questions.
Can we go to the question for the person whose number ends in 4208, please?
Good evening, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to know, when they paint the apartment, can you use your own paint?
Thank you so much for that question. So in general, we, our intention is to do a consistent scope of work across the apartment, across all apartments, I should say. We work with designers as well as our architect to have a scope that we think looks good. It's contemporary. And again, we have the, the renderings that you've seen today, both for the hallways as well as for the bathrooms. And previously, we've shown the renderings for the kitchens. So we do plan on doing the, the same color paint for the, for the apartments. That said, of course, if there are extenuating circumstances and individual circumstances, please do come to us. I would say right now is not the time because it's in a public forum. So if you want to send us an email and we can talk with you about a, a specific concern, we really encourage that. Our email address, we've communicated before, but it's info@harlemriver.org. And of course, we have our office at the, the New York Public Library site. So if there is a specific design feature that you would like to talk to us about, we'd love to hear about it. With that said, the, the general, the, the base approach is that we will be doing the same scope across, across the units. It makes it much easier for maintenance purposes. If something goes wrong with the paint, we can't necessarily go and, you know, buy that paint again. And it's, it's, we are intending to do a consistent scope across the property. Okay, it looks like we have a question about playgrounds. Ellie, do you want to answer that one? That was asked in the Q and A.
Oh, about, um, at 190? So I, I think I answered it, but just to make sure we're talking about the same question, so whether we'll be working on the playground at building seven, correct? So the answer is, the answer is yes. There's a, there's a exciting design about the playground, the grounds there, you know, refreshing the paths, introducing more lighting, play equipment, new, new planting. So that area as well as the central area around, you know, the, the stairs, the flagpole, that central courtyard by the fountain are all getting a lot of, a lot of work. It's a beautiful site, it's landmarked, and the plan is to restore it to its original, original design, the original, you know, glory of, of the site.
Thanks Ellie, and there will be a whole lot of landscape work going on. We've discussed this in previous meetings, but a lot of repair to the pavements, the cobblestones, the central fountain that's in the middle of the site, in the middle of Harlem River will be getting fully repaired. We're doing a lot of different playground work to provide equipment for the kids. And there's also going to be a number of different benches, tables, and of course, trash receptacles around the site to make sure that it's a nice experience, a comfortable experience and one that you can enjoy. Okay, let's continue. I see 0955, 0955, do you want to ask us your question? Can you hear us? The number ending in 0955? Okay. If you, I'm going to lower your hand on my end, but if you're having some technical issues, just please re- raise your hand again, again, and we will be sure to try again. Okay, let's go with.
Hello?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Um, I, I spoke already about the, the lock on the door.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was, okay, that was your question, okay. It might, might have been that your hand just didn't get raised in the system. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on. Let's try number ending in 4208. 4208, can you hear us? Okay, let's try a different one. Let's see. Let's try 3649. Do you want to unmute? I'm striking out here. 3649, can you hear me?
Yes, hello, hello?
Hi, yes, we can hear you. Do you have a question?
Yes. I'm, I'm looking, I'm listening to your, with all the designs and everything, they really look nice. Now, I've been here since 1955. Now, that lobby, I meant 2850, the new side. It looked very nice of what you're going to do. But what you're going to do to keep the people out there, out of the hallway doing their business?
Absolutely.
Urinating in the elevators, you and they, I, I watched a guy empty out his colosseum bag in the lobby the other day.
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a great question. So there are a few different ways. And again, our security staff can also join, we can make sure that they join a future meeting to make sure that they can talk to you themselves. But I'll give you a quick overview of how we approach security. So first of all, there are a number of physical improvements. You saw the lobby design. Part of what, part of what the lobby does is it provides a lot more light, which is in and of itself a security feature. If you can see into and out of the lobby, it tends to be more secure and attract less bad behavior. Second of all, we're going to be replacing all the doors, as we said, all the front doors of each apartment as well as all the front doors of, of the buildings themselves. Every tenant will have a little fob that they touch against the, the lock to open the door. So there will be less people in the buildings that are not supposed to be there. Then we also have the cameras. We're doing a very extensive installation of security cameras. It will be in all, in the lobbies, in the stair halls, in the hallways, in the common areas. So obviously, we don't want to let it get to this point, but if someone is doing something they're not supposed to be doing, it's going to be on camera. So it's something that we can then act on and make sure that we're addressing it rather than just leaving it. And then finally, once the construction begins, there will be a new management company. It's not, Nigel will no longer be the management company, they're, they're still the owner of the building, but the management company will be CNC. And CNC has a very large staff of security personnel. Many of them are former New York, New York Police Department officers who are extremely experienced in dealing with these sorts of issues, both the large issues such as the unfortunate, very unfortunate story that the, the tenant previously shared about the break-in, as well as smaller issues, quality of life issues. So, you know, as you mentioned, you know, folks urinating in an elevator, which is unacceptable, right? That's not, that's, people don't want to live with that. Or leaving trash outside of their doors. They have a lot of experience dealing with that as well. They will be patrolling the grounds in the evenings and they'll be available for you to call if you have any issues. This is, you'll get a lot more information about how to call and sort of what services are offered over the next few months. But suffice it to say that there are a number of improvements, not just design, but actual people that are going to be there to support the tenancy and make sure, you know, folks have a comfortable place to live.
So what about the stairway? Because they hanging in the stairway. Now, I'm, I'm very, very concerned because there was a woman on the stairway with three of her children and they were sleeping on the stairway.
Absolutely.
And she was getting them up, washing them up out of the, um, the sink, the flop place.
Right.
She had a family there.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's a great, I mean, it's a, it's a kind of a tragic example, but a great example. There will also be cameras in the stairway, in the stairways.
Okay, okay.
And again, if they're, the, the new management company is extremely responsive. So if you notice something like this, once CNC becomes the property manager, please let us know. You'll have a phone number that you can call to our personnel onsite. And we'll actually have people onsite that are available to handle these sorts of issues.
And how confident are you? This is my last question. How confident are you that the people not going to get in the building because they break the windows open? They break, they pry the door open? How confident are you that they not going to take, do the same thing?
Of, I mean, it's a, it's a.
They don't need keys, they just, they, they just break things open.
It's, it's a perfectly reasonable question. What I would, this is how I would respond. I would say that nothing changes overnight. It's just the way of the world, right? If you make a change, a big physical change, we're about to do it Harlem River, it doesn't mean that the whole neighborhood and the whole community is going to change overnight from a security perspective. With that said, things will improve over time. Over time, as we, as people realize that we will actually respond, that our staff will respond to these security incidents, it will change. I can't ever, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to sit here and make a promise that we can't keep, of course, but things will improve. We will have people onsite that are, that are trained to, to handle these things from day one. And as the physical improvements go in, like the cameras aren't going to all be installed on the first day, of course, we have a lot of work to do. But as these things go in, you will start seeing improvements in your community.
Okay, well, thank you for answering my questions and I'm looking forward to all the changes.
Great, thank you so much.
Looking forward to it.
Great, thanks so much.
Have a great evening.
Yeah, you too. Okay, why don't we move on? I see one more question. Number ending in 2629. Do you want to unmute?
Hi, I'm calling about the maintenance, if something should need repair in our apartments. Do we still call the 777 number? Or is there another number? Will there be another number for us to contact people? And will they be doing the same? Uh, putting in a ticket and waiting for somebody to come?
So that's a, that's a great question. So the answer to your ques, so I'll answer this in a simple way and then I'll give you a longer explanation. The simple answer is, for right now, the management is still being handled by Nycha. Nycha is still the property manager and they are responsible for maintenance of the apartment. So until the date that the project, until we start construction, which we will, and we will communicate that date to you as soon as we're aware of the exact date, it will be in this fall. As soon as that date happens, then the, the management company will transition to CNC and the number that you call for maintenance will change. But until that point, the maintenance is exactly the same as it always has been. It will be Nycha fielding the phone calls that you, that you dial and the ticket system will stay the same. Once we transition and CNC becomes the property manager, again, Nycha will continue to own the building, but CNC will be the property manager starting this fall. Before that happens, we will send you, we'll, we'll make sure all of the tenants are well aware of the new maintenance hotline that you need to call in order to, to, to bring a maintenance issue to CNC's attention. And then they will address it accordingly. Ellie, so I, I'm with Settlement Housing Fund. Ellie, or Priscilla, or Lori, are you aware of how the ticket system works with CNC? Unfortunately, our main, the person that I would typically ask this question was unable to join this call tonight. But Ellie, are you aware of how CNC's ticket system works for maintenance issues?
Priscilla can definitely speak to it more, more clearly. I'm not sure if she's on the call, but they have a, they have a great program called Yardi where you either, you call, you're assigned a ticket number, so there's accountability and it's immediately logged and they hand it out to the staff and it's addressed. But I guess most importantly, there's, there's accountability. You have a number, it's logged into a system, they know what date it went in, that you called in with XYZ complaint or leak, and then it's addressed. And if it's not addressed in a timely fashion, you can communicate with the excellent management staff that will be onsite and they can look into it. But it will be addressed in a timely fashion precisely because there is accountability. There is the funding onsite to take care of it, the materials, the staff, you know, et cetera.
So will we have someone sort of as a housing assistant that we call if there's any extra, if they don't come? Will we have a number to someone else, you know, the hierarchy?
Sure, so there will be, there will be supers that are onsite that, that actually have, that, that live onsite, that will have, they'll be live-in supers that will be available to take care of certain issues. Typically, the issues that they take care of are the smaller ones that don't require some sort of skilled contractor. My understanding is that you will have access to, to this staff by calling the office that will be staffing onsite, so you will be able to get in touch with them for small repairs. If it's a larger job, there's, you know, something happens and, you know, you need some sort of repair, that's not just, you know, my light switch isn't working or, you know, something small, then you will fi, you'll likely file, file a maintenance ticket similar to how you do it now. But it will be the CNC management company that will come out and schedule a time and, and to come take care of it. What I do want to say. Oh, yes, Priscilla, please.
Hi, so yes, thank you Ellie and thank you Sam, everything you said was, was exactly right. And there will also be, we have the equivalent to a maintenance coordinator, assistant property manager, that is also going to be working directly with the residents and the maintenance team, ensuring that all work order requests are being handled in a timely fashion and the flow is working seamlessly through the residents and the maintenance team. So that's how everything is also going to be handled. The flow of communication and the work process is seamlessly.
And all of these people will report up through Priscilla, who's participating, is already onsite and obviously has a, a really strong sense of what's going on on the site and will be there after we also start the construction.
All right, thank you.
Great. So let's see, do we have any? Do we have any other questions from the translation lines? Okay, it looks like we may have gotten through all of them for now. It is just two minutes before 7:30, which is our stop time, so we will, I think, wrap things up. As a reminder, this meeting has been recorded, the whole thing. We will post it to our website by the end of next week, which is www.harlemriver.org. And of course, you can pick up copies of the slideshow if you'd like, they're available in the property management office. And we're looking forward to, of course, our next, our next town hall meeting, which will be in four to six weeks. We will, as we always do, announce the date, post flyers, we'll drop off the slides at everyone's apartment to make sure that you have many different ways to, to participate and many reminders about when it is occurring. So I think we'll sign off for now. Thank you so much, everyone. It looks like we have one more question and we do have one more minute in the Spanish line, so why don't we take this one? Yes, Michelle?
Okay, the interpreter will collect the question now.
Great.
When, when is the date for, for, for repairs, please?
Sure, so it's a, it's a good question. The repairs. The, the, the date of the repairs will depend on the apartment. We are scheduling all of the apartments for both routine repairs as well as inspections. And then eventually, once we start construction in the fall, the repair appointments will actually be to do the renovation work, to actually do the kitchens and the bathrooms. So if you don't know your repair appointment, don't worry, it's just because we haven't said it yet. So we will be sending out a notice to your union, unit. And it will include the date and the time of your repair appointment. And if that time does not work for you, please let us know and we can reschedule it. And if that time does not work for you, please let us know, and we can reschedule it. But not to worry if you're not aware of it yet. It just means that we're still working to schedule it. So just look out for a notice at your door, a p- excuse me, a paper notice. Um, and that will have the time and date of your appointment. It was a good question, though. Okay, seven thirty. Um, we made it. Um, thank you so much, everyone. It's great to have you on. Um, really gratifying to hear um, all your questions, provide answers. Please don't stop asking questions. This is not the only forum that you can reach us. We have our hotline, we have our office, we have our our email address. Please, please, please let us know your concerns. Um, the more we know, um, the better prepared we are to make sure that as soon as we start construction, as soon as, as soon as we start management, um, we're providing a community for you that you are really enjoying living in. So thank you so much, everyone. Um, be safe, be well, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
On that note, uh, Nycha just also wants to express our appreciation to everyone who came out tonight, and we want to remind you all that um, we are still involved in this process. And if you have questions that are specific for Nycha, you can reach us at the PACT hotline. Um, as well as um, uh, through uh, the PACT hotline and the PACT email. So uh, any questions, feel free to reach out to Nycha as well, and thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks so much, everyone. Thank you, Ian. Bye.